We're at capacity tonight, so everyone could make sure you fill in the seats. Scoot to the aisle, or I don't know. Can't remember what Disneyland used to do, but yeah, just scoot in. Scoot to the middle, so we have seats.
Okay, before we start our regular meeting, we have a closed session that we were in, and so we're going to close our closed session meeting, our special council meeting. Mrs. Peak, if you could please close it.
The city council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed two matters, the first being real property negotiations under government code section 549-56.8. The city council discussed the matter with real property negotiators, city manager and Matt Trainer of IDS, and provided direction to those negotiators. No reportable action was taken. On item number three, which is potential litigation under government code section 549-56.9 sub D sub four, this is one potential action relating to SEMA construction. The contractor for the San Marcos Creek District Infrastructure Project, the city council discussed the matter with city manager, city engineer, and city attorney, and provided direction. No reportable action was taken, and that concludes the closed session report.
All right, thank you. With that, the special council meeting is adjourned. And we'll start our regular meeting in just one minute. And I want to say it's wonderful to see everyone's smiling faces out there this evening. It's a treat for us. Not everyone's always smiling. Okay, with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to tell you, that actually brings tears to my eyes, pretty much. You all are doing such a great job. Anyway, I have an invocation this evening. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, play, and work. Guide them peacefully through debate. Remind them that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is good, right, and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen. Okay, could we please have the roll call, Mr. Scully?
Yeah, Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
And I'm here. Okay. If the council could please join me down in the front. We have a few presentations, and I think we have a lot of people in the audience that are really excited this evening. Okay, so it is actually, we have a little bit of business before you ladies are going to be coming up here. So first off, we have a proclamation for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which is a heavy subject, but we have something, someone that's wonderful here this evening to join us, and that is going to be Claudia DeGrassio from the Executive Director of One Safe Place, and Tara Sarah Binata, the Assistant Executive Director of One Safe Place, and our district attorney, Summer Stefan. So if you could please come up and join me, ladies? Thank you so much for joining us this evening. So in San Marcos, we have One Safe Place, which has been a wonderful asset for our community. It's a heavy subject, but it's also a subject that does have, a lot of times, a happy ending, because with the work that they're doing over at One Safe Place is really a restoration of people's lives and really turning their lives around, and it really is amazing. So if you've never been there, it's a great place to go and do some sort of project where you might do some community service. So anyway, I know they need lots of love over there. So, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas October is the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it progress, the progress that has been made in preventing and addressing domestic violence, significant work remains to support survivors and their families. It is essential for policymakers and communities to collaborate in transforming the conditions that perpetuate domestic violence and to promote survivor-centered solutions. Approximately 43% of California women and 42% of California men experience physical partner violence in their lifetimes, and domestic violence affects individuals across all demographics, with marginalized groups facing increased vulnerability. Children exposed to domestic violence may suffer long-term consequences, including academic and behavioral issues, causing a significant economic impact of an estimated $73.7 billion in 2022 in California alone. All survivors deserve access to culturally responsive programs and resources. We, the City of San Marcos, proclaim October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all of our community members to observe this month by learning more about prevention and participating in community awareness efforts. And so today, we have our wonderful team here, led by our, the amazing, I can't actually say enough nice things about her, but Summer Stefan, if you've never met her, her heart for people is really unparalleled, and she's the top law enforcement person in our entire county, so, and she's in a cute little package, too, on top of it. Which, which, you know, I know that's not, maybe you don't like me saying that, but she really is amazing. I can't tell you enough about her. So anyway, I'd like for you to say a few words, if you don't mind.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jones, for your continuous support, and council members for opening your door in San Marcos to have the state-of-the-art Family Justice Center in the world. That is what the organizers that started the Family Justice Centers have said about our center, and this is due to the work and dedication of so many, but especially these two amazing leaders that are there, from the district attorney's office, Claudia Grasso and Terrene Sarabana. But this wouldn't have happened without the support of the mayor. To open something new is always, takes courage, but she had the courage, she was there when it was an empty call center that really was not pretty at all, and we wanted something fantastic for our crime victims, and with the support of the council, this opened on July 5th of 2022. So it's only been two years, and I just want to give you a quick report. 6,300 victims and survivors walked through the door. 2,000 of those were little kids, from infants to ages that we see here in this wonderful cheerleading group. And they found a safe place there, where all in one place, they could start their life, a life full of dignity and safety, which every human being deserves. Every human being deserves to be safe from violence, and especially in their own home, to not be abused by anyone, and not anyone that claims to love them, because love should not hurt. And this is 70% of our victims that walk in are victims of domestic violence, elder abuse, human trafficking are the other big categories that we see there. But the results are in, and they are results of hope, because we don't believe in not making sure that we measure the success. And I want to report to the council and the mayor that we have had a year of an all-time low in domestic violence murders. We've had five, as compared to an average of 15 to 16 murders. This is a 30-year low, and it's hard not to think that the fact that we can prevent violence by interrupting it through 107 organizations coming together to provide safe shelter, safe jobs, making the phone safe from tracking, the cars safe, making sure that the whole family is safe, is a reason. And overall, we've seen a 32% reduction, and this is not nationwide, this is unique to San Diego County. So we're going to keep going to make sure that everyone, every child, every adult, and every senior is safe here in this county, so you can grow up and be whoever you want to be, free of violence and in safety. So I'm so excited to be here. It's a perfect day you picked, Mayor, us along with this incredible group of cheerleader athletes. It's really amazing to be with all of you, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And real quick, Prop 36 is going to be on the ballot this year. Did you have anything you wanted to say real quick? We supported that.
Well, thank you so much for your support. So Proposition 36 is the last proposition on the November ballot, and it provides a fix to three major California and San Diego problems: homelessness, addiction, the fentanyl dealers that are killing our community, and also the rampant retail theft. It will balance the laws so that law enforcement and prosecutors can make sure that the community, small and large businesses, are safe. And that's Prop 36. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. I know it's a heavy subject, but what they do is really amazing. All right. Well, there's a lot of you, I can barely carry this. Okay, next is Helping Hearts. So, we have some students from, well, actually, including Julian Leach Tagg. We have Brooklyn Nelson, Michaela De La Rosa, the founders of Helping Hearts Club, and Principal Linda Heinrich, and Ms. Martha Vargas from Julian Leach Tagg. Can you come on down? So, this is such an amazing group. Okay, so we have one for the schools, I'll give that to you. You're very welcome, Michaela. I'll give that to you. And then Brooklyn, I'm going to read this, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Anyway, "The San Marcos City Council does hereby present Brooklyn Nelson with an honorable certificate of recognition for her service to the community through the Helping Hearts Club. In third grade, Brooklyn co-founded Helping Hearts Club, which successfully raised $1,200 for local nonprofits over three years. With the guidance of Ms. Martha Vargas and Principal Laura Heinrich, they organized fundraisers to support community resources. The City of San Marcos congratulates you in the lasting impact you have had on our community as the Helping Hearts Club continues to thrive." Congratulations. You don't have to, but would you like to say a little something? Okay, all right. I don't want to put you on the spot, in case you're not ready.
I don't actually go to Julian anymore. I actually just promoted last year, so now I go to San Marcos Middle. And we are trying to start it again this year, so, but it's getting kind of hard, because we don't really know where to go, but we've been trying, so I think we're going to do it next semester. And this year, I got word from my sister that they continue it, and they got 50 kids to sign up, whereas last year, we only had 20.
Well, congratulations, and maybe you need to go and talk to One Safe Place, because that might be a place for you to spread the word, too. So anyway, if you can come and take a quick picture with us, that'd be great. All right, now, guess what's next? Anybody? San Marcos Pop Warner Cheer! Not for just any championship, but the West Coast Conference. Look at all of them. That is so amazing. Let's give them all a hand. So when we were in our closed session, we were in that little room over there in the window, I could see out the window, and then I saw little heads peeping up. I could see this whole place growing and seeing so many people show up. It is so great to see all of your faces, and the fact that you guys did this is amazing. So I'm going to bring up, let's see here, we're going to start out with Angela Martinez, the San Marcos Pop Warner Association Cheer Director. And then, we're going to call up each team individually, and they will do a cheer. Yes? And, and say a few words, and then we'll take a boring picture. The fun part's going to be the cheer. So anyway, thank you so much, this is so exciting. Okay, so I'm going to read this to you. "The San Marcos City Council does hereby present San Marcos Pop Warner Cheer with an honorable certificate," that's all of you, yes, "for the West Coast Conference Cheer Competition, where all four teams, all four teams, place first in their divisions." "The coaches and the teams have brought considerable recognition to themselves and our community, and for that, we're so grateful. For their dedication, their camaraderie, and sportsmanship, the city council of the City of San Marcos proudly congratulate you, and we're so excited to celebrate with you this evening." I'm going to start out by bringing Mighty Mike's Division, Griffiths. Okay, I have to find out, how old are all you? Seven, eight, nine?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, not all of my numbers are in there, but the seven's in there. Okay, so we are, we are celebrating you today, the Mighty Mike Griffins, with an honorable certificate of recognition for placing first at the West Coast Conference Cheer Competition. But you know what? I'm sure no one wants to hear my boring discussion, so why don't we have you do a little cheer and then say a few words? How about that? All right, that was amazing, ladies. Did you, did you want to say a few words, Coach?
No.
No? Okay, no! Okay, all right, that's okay. Just a little something.
I'm so proud of these girls, they've worked so hard from the first day to today. They're awesome, and just big hand, hand of applause. Good job, girls.
All right, we're going to take a quick picture, don't go running off. All right, get in here, because luckily, you're fairly taller, or I'm fairly taller than you, but. Good job. Okay, next up, Junior Pee Wee Bishops. All right, what's your age range? Eight, nine, ten? Okay. Nine? Okay, see, we've got a nine in there. Okay, we are, the San Marcos City Council does hereby present our Junior Pee Wee Bishops with an honorable certificate of recognition for placing first at the West Coast Conference Cheer, and let's see what you got, girls. All right, what coach is going to come up and speak? Tell us about what happened. This is amazing.
Thank you. We are so incredibly proud of these girls. The way that you train, the way that you motivate each other and dedicate your entire after-school lives to us and weekends. You would never know it, watching them perform either at a football game or on the competition mat. Only two of these girls have competed before this season, and you girls train and you have the talent of somebody who's doing it, been doing it for years, all their life. Congratulations, girls. Embrace this win, and we'll do it again.
Of course, thank you. All right, Pee Wee Saints. "The San Marcos City Council does hereby present you, the Pee Wee Saints, with an honorable certificate of recognition for placing first in the West Coast Conference Cheer Competition." So are you, do you have a cheer for us?
Yeah.
All right, let's go. Yeah, be careful, we do have firemen, but we don't want to, we don't want to have to have them help you.
Set. As I'm in the front, ready?
Okay! As I'm in the front, let me hear you go, ah! As I'm in the back, show me where it's at, right here! As I'm in the stand, stand up and clap your hands like this! Like this! As I'm!
Wait, before you run off, we're going to have your, your coach gets to say something, and then we're going to take a picture. Congratulations.
Thank you. So fun.
All right, well, this is our champion team right here. I am so proud of them, they work tirelessly every day, literally blood, sweat, and tears, but they are still there, they are still on the field, and they are ready to go as soon as we get to practice. And, you know, we've got just as hard to work, we're, we have a goal, we're going to Nationals. That is our number-one goal, and we are hoping that we will see all of these faces there as well. All right.
Thank you. And I forgot to ask, what are the ages of?
Oh, nine to 12.
Nine to 12? Nine to 13? Okay, we stand corrected. Okay, all right, let's take a quick picture. All right, now we have our
We are number one! We are the Knights, too! A little bit louder, three! I still can't hear you! We are number one! We are the Knights, too! A little bit louder, three! I still can't hear you! We are number one!
Okay, we're going to take a picture now, but I want it to be on the record, this is literally the best council meeting we've ever had. All right, where's the coach?
Right here.
Oh, there you are. You have a few words for us?
Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. I just want to say how impressed I have been with these group of young ladies, their dedication, their commitment, and their passion and love for the sport, for their team, and for their community. It really shines through when they perform. They have such a strong bond. Some of them have been cheering together since they were seven. Some of them are brand-new, and we just welcome them with open arms, and I love San Marcos Pop Warner. This organization has brought me some of my best friends, and I'm just so proud to be from San Marcos and for this amazing group of athletes.
You guys are awesome. Okay. I don't know, but let Phil. Phil, you tell us how to go.
I'm here.
Okay, maybe like a couple of rows, like down and...
Line up how we took a picture.
Start smiling. Yeah, that's good.
Oh, you got the certificates? Okay, we have certificates for all of you. Oh, don't come up here. Come up here. Got to use the microphone.
I just want to let you know that we would not be here today if it wasn't for this man over here. He's our president, so I really want to thank you.
All right, you've been voluntold, so now you get to say a few words for us this evening.
I sure have. Thank you very much. I, thank you. I had nothing to do with this. I came in, Angel took it, and she and Lexi, I mean, you guys are totally autonomous, and it makes my job so much easier. Thank you guys for all that you do. You guys have made San Marcos Pop Warner incredibly proud, made the City of San Marcos incredibly proud.
We are.
You guys are phenomenal. Thank you guys very much. So cheer!
Thank you, parents. Thank you so much, parents, for your support, your commitment, your time, your money. But we have a goal, and anybody that owns a business that's here that wants to maybe have a tax write-off, we are looking to raise a bit of money, so...
Okay, you need to send us more information on that.
I will.
We'll help spread the word. Thank you. And after the Nationals are over, we want you to get back to us and let us know what's going on. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming. All right, I won't make you stay through the boring stuff unless you want to, but if you'd like to, you can. If not, then I could just wait a couple of minutes while everyone just... If you need to go home and do homework or anything, just saying. Thank you. Okay, that's council meeting ever. Sorry, now we have, well, we actually have a, it's actually a remarkable thing. So, our Development Services is going to come down because we actually have a certificate of recognition for the award of merit given to our city and our team in Development Services for the Creek Infrastructure Project. Your tireless efforts, and here's Isaac Etchimindi, your tireless efforts to improve assessability, minimize flood risk, preserve creek habitats, improve the ability to traverse the area, and timeliness of the project completion are to be highly commended. The City Council of the City of San Marcos extends our sincerest gratitude and appreciation. If you didn't all see, we had our ribbon cutting this week, and what a wonderful project. So, Isaac, congratulations to you and your team. We really are very grateful for everything. Did you have a few words you'd like to say?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
It's been an honor to deliver infrastructure for this city. Thank you, City Council. You guys have been great supporters of the built environment and infrastructure. Really, that's what makes a community and starts everything, making sure that people can traverse the creek, they're not getting stuck, and so, really, it's been wonderful, the 15 years I've been here, to be able to do this. So, thank you again. Thank you all.
Okay, now we get to get on to the rest of our meeting. Definitely the best meeting of the year. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that any council members wish to pull?
I would like to pull item number five.
Okay, and any other? Do you have a motion for the rest?
I'll motion the rest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all except for item number five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, seeing none, item number five.
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple comments on this. So, this is the one where we are disbanding the Creekside, Creete-specific plan oversight committee, and I just want everybody to know, I know Rebecca, you reached out to some people too. I tried to connect with my eight people. I met with one person, talked to four people. All five understand the reason for disbanding the committee. We just felt like a courtesy outreach was a good idea. Two have moved, and one I have not actually spoken to yet, but I'm still trying. So, just want to let you know, everybody was very positive about it, that I spoke to.
Okay, thank you, and I was actually on that original committee way back when. I think we formed that back in 2005, if I'm not mistaken, so before I was a council member. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Seeing none, okay, motion passes.
And I just want to comment that I need to leave for a family situation, but I'll give my North County Transit report next time.
No worries.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to oral communications. We have three speakers. It will be the Rassits, followed by Karen Gendler, Gendler, Gendler. I said it right the first time. I didn't have my glasses on, so I'm just trying to wing it here. And then John Mosher. So, the Rassits. Heidi and Greg. The little yearly special thing that you do for our community, the San Marcos Veterans Day Ceremony, on, of course, November 11th, Monday this year.
Well, thank you, and for the mayor, council members, Michelle, Mark Olson, and especially Jennifer, we greatly appreciate, Heidi and I are very honored to be able to invite everybody to the Veterans Day Ceremony. Again, it's Monday, 11 November, and stare on the slide. That was last year's participants. Next slide, please. We've had a number of different themes, a number of awesome speakers, and I guess this is the 14th year, so we're excited. This year, we have a combat correspondent, which I'll bring up in just a couple more slides. Next slide, please. We typically follow the Veterans Affairs 2024, or excuse me, the theme that they have every year. This year, it's the legacy of loyalty and service. You'll hear that a few times, but we follow the VA's theme. Next slide. The agenda, for those that have gone to it in the past, is very familiar. We begin with TAPS, which is in recognition of Armistice Day way back in World War I, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, when Germany signed, "I'm not going to fight anymore." So, we remember that, and that begins TAPS, and then we go through the rest of the ceremony. We're going to have a local band from the schools, we have the San Leo Middle School Jazz Band. It's just a fun event, and then, of course, you can see what happens, which is a typical military-type theme. And after a long time in the military, Heidi and I just kind of bring it here. Now, our guest speaker. I'm going to say a couple of words real quick. Lieutenant Commander Amy Forsyth was born and raised in Santa Rosa, California, went into the Marine Corps in 1993, stationed at Camp Pendleton, and began as a combat correspondent. Of course, Amy's right next to Heidi here. She is currently a public affairs officer, bringing all that knowledge with her, and, of course, an award-winning military journalist. Served five combat tours supporting operations enduring freedom, which is Afghanistan, as a reminder, and Iraqi Freedom. She attended Palomar. She's a 2005 graduate of CSU San Marcos and holds a master's of science degree from the University of San Diego. I want to point out, she's the alumni ambassador for California State University at San Marcos. Next slide. That's what I want to cover, encouraging everybody here and those listening to, please, come to the Veterans Day Ceremony. It's going to be awesome. Amy's got an awesome set of credentials, and with that, I'm going to let Heidi and Amy say a couple of words.
I think we're going to start with Amy.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you for the warm introduction and the kind invitation, and so, at the ceremony, you'll hear a little bit about my service journey, but what brought me to North County, and then specifically to Cal State San Marcos. So, I just couldn't be more thrilled to spend that very special day. It's a special day for me, and it's a special day for our community, so I hope to see you all there on Monday, November 11th. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are so proud of Amy. In fact, every year, we like to say we're doing something for the first, I don't know, do you remember when we brought the horse? Yeah, that was the first, too. But this year, we have an author, and I've invited Amy to bring her book, and we're going to do, we're going to set up a table, and we're going to do a book signing. So, this is a first for us. We're so proud that Amy is a part of us, and I do want to take the time to thank Jen for you sharing Jennifer with us is a gift. I tell you, the work she does for us, unbelievable. So, I do want to thank Jennifer for everything. And then lastly, well, first of all, that group of cheerleaders, the best city council meeting ever. Thank you for inviting us to the best. And I tell you, I tried to get a hold of all of them, "Come to the Veterans Day, come to the Veterans Day, and wear your uniforms." What a wonderful, wonderful city council meeting, Mayor Rebecca Jones. And lastly, and most importantly, is never is a memo sent to you, is just nothing to us when we can't come personally and invite you, each and every one of you, to our Veterans Day Ceremony. So, our personal invite to you, and thank you very much for having us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is Carol Gendel. I can't read that, Gendel. I'm sorry, Carol. I was thinking I was saying it wrong, but...
Well, you, yeah, Gendel.
Sorry. Sorry. Go ahead.
I am delighted to be here, Mayor Jones, city council members, and citizens of San Marcos. It's my honor to stand before you to report on the status of the San Marcos Community Foundation, and it's been a couple of years since we gave you a report. Our current Board of Directors is excited to build upon the strong efforts by Mayor Doc Burton and President Colleen Lukoff, and to continue the success of the community foundation. Since 2020, we've awarded 84 separate nonprofit organizations, some $279,837, on an endowment of just over $1,300,000. Organizations as large as Feeding San Diego and as small as Tech Angels, three young brothers who wanted to buy iPads for nursing home residents to communicate with their families during the COVID isolation period, have applied for support. And while our endowment remains stable at about $1,300,000, the number of applicants and dollars requests have skyrocketed. This fall quarter, we have 13 applicants asking for a total of $62,634, but we have no more than $16,255 to give, so there are some tough decisions ahead. Over the last few years, in order to increase efficiency, we've transitioned several administrative processes, including the grant application process and donations... and donations to the community foundation in which our endowment is invested. This has standardized the application process and necessary paperwork. This partnership has allowed us to process online donations in a timely fashion and send prompt acknowledgements to the donors, even more important. Additionally, donors can now make donations via credit card in addition to checks and PayPal. And we have the website up on the screen right now. In the spring of 2023, we partnered with the Cal State San Marcos Business School Senior Experience Team to create a strategic plan. We identified many challenges. First and foremost is, very few in the San Marcos community know we're here. So our primary goal is to grow our community visibility and ultimately our endowment. We've created a trifold, which all of you have gotten a copy of, to document the work that we're doing and the importance of seeking ongoing financial support. The trifold is stocked in the City Hall literature racks and is part of the information at the Spring and Fall Street Fairs. Next, we produced an oversized check for presentation photos. And we've done several photo ops in just the last couple of months. These pictures are immediately posted on the foundation Facebook page and city's website under the news section each quarter. But we want to do more, and the only way we can award more and larger grants is to grow the endowment. With this goal in mind, we're thinking big. We've applied to Supervisor Desmond's office for a community enhancement grant of $14,900. We hope that through this grant, we'll have funds for marketing and publicity, for small gatherings to introduce our work to large San Marcos businesses, and to wealth management professionals who can introduce the foundation to their clients who may be looking to make philanthropic donations. Another use of the community enhancement grant is to co-sponsor public events, such as the City July 4th Celebration, the State of the City Address, and other large visibility events where thousands will see our brand. The cost for these isn't huge, but we've not wanted to dip into our endowment, so this is an opportunity. We have a smart and enthusiastic team who work well together and represent various areas of the community. Our hope is that the community becomes better educated about the San Marcos Community Foundation and the philanthropic efforts made on behalf of the city of San Marcos, and will want to help us grow to meet our growing needs. I hope that those who are watching in the community will be inspired to donate to the San Marcos Community Foundation so we can give larger grants to the nonprofit organizations who serve our community so well. I thank you for this opportunity to update you and our community, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions?
Any questions?
Real quickly, so you still have the original endowment in place. We're working off interest and donations?
Correct. We are working off the interest. And the foundation that we're working with has done a good job of keeping that stable. But stable just doesn't help where we've grown from 19,000 people back in, when we were founded, to close to 100,000 people.
And this, if I remember correctly, this was Doc Burton that started this?
Doc Burton is the one who started it. It's an interesting backstory, but we were given a million-dollar check, and he set up the foundation. And we've been working with it ever since. So we've had a couple of good-sized donations, but people don't know we're here to give us money. And that's why we need much more visibility on it.
Thank you for your stewardship, Carol.
Thank you for everything that you do. You'd mentioned that you have 1.3 million and that you have about 16,000 to give away in this upcoming session. Have you seen any sort of increase in interest with the interest rate environment and interest rates going up? Have you been able to reevaluate your investments? And it seems that you could probably get at least 3%?
Well, we're doing, well, we're with, Phil actually has some input on this. We, at the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1st, we look at what we have basically for the year and divide it up by four. But Phil?
Yeah, essentially, the beginning of each new fiscal year, we take what the current balances of the endowment and figure out what the 4% and 5% range is that we're able to, per the bylaws, to donate. And that will provide us the overall amount for the four quarters to donate, per the bylaws of the foundation. We've found that, you know, through the investment of the endowment pool, that we've been able to donate the maximum 5% year over year, and still end the year essentially with our same, if not more, in the endowment. So, yeah, we've seen a pretty good return on the endowment the last few years.
Thank you for clarifying that. I misunderstood. I thought it was 16,000 for the whole year.
Oh, no, no, no.
If it's just for the quarter, then you're actually doing pretty good.
Yeah, that's just for the quarter. And we see a rise and fall in the number of applicants. August tends to be smaller. November tends to be a big month, and so on. And so we try and make our decisions of how much to give, trying to keep a little bit in reserve for when we know the bigger months are going to hit. So we try and be good stewards, but it's not easy, you know. There are a lot of really good organizations that are helping us, and we would like to be able to help them more.
Thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
My pleasure, truly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Carol, I would challenge you to come up with some fun new idea of a signature event where you can actually have a thing. And I personally will try to help you as much as I can. So I would love to see you brainstorm something, and if you want to bounce some ideas off me, I would love to hear them.
We are actually brainstorming on that.
Great.
So it is, but again, to be able to do that, we needed some seed money. And so that's why we've applied for the grant. So, but that's taking a little time. I'm going to be a little bit of a charming nudge to the supervisor's office, just to make sure that things keep moving ahead. And, yeah, but I will keep that in mind, and we will be coming back to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your good job. Okay, next up is John Mosher, followed by Flower Alvarez Lopez.
Hello, Mayor, city council members, staff. I just wanted to go back over something I'd run into before. As a member of SEMRA, the San Marcos Mobile Home Resident Association, I was invited to speak at Lakeview this last week. What I encountered there was similar to what I've had happen at our park and what I saw at El Dorado earlier in the year when we went there. There were problems with maintenance. And one of the reoccurring themes that I heard was they were being told that they weren't paying enough money to have the park maintained, which is something that we were told at our park for years, which is also one of the reasons I pushed it to actually bring it to the city council at a rent review hearing to try and actually get a change. What I asked for before was yearly inspections, so that at the time, these owners can put in for their yearly rent request, that we also have an inspection of the park. Right now, everything is just placed on the residence to come up with a list, try and negotiate with the owners, and then hope that once that is said and done and the increase goes through, that they'll live up to what they promised us. And unfortunately, many times, that part doesn't occur. Or you're not going to get that far. You're just trying to negotiate out of it so it doesn't, you know, cause anybody any further problems. And I was just reminded at the meeting, they have a nice clubhouse where the board was sitting at the front, just like where you guys are sitting. Imagine that being dark and the rest of the room being lit. Now, this meeting was known about ahead of time, but management never made sure that the lights in that room were on. So as a board, we sat up there, and we were in the dark. They were trying to read their papers. It just, it was frustrating. And then seeing the same thing happening with them that had happened to us for years, it just reminded me over the weekend to come back in again and ask to somehow do we include these inspections. So I'll be reaching out more about that in the future, but I keep seeing it at more of the parks. For SEMRA, we're rebuilding the organization. I'm meeting with a group tomorrow, and we're looking at how we can revamp our website to bring it current, make it more interactive, and make it so seniors at all mobile home parks, whether they're resident-owned or rental parks like us, can come to us as a one-stop shop and then get directed out from there. But I appreciate you guys' support, and I appreciate the fact I can come here and talk to you. And I love these meetings. Tonight was great. You got it.
Best meeting of the, of my whole term, of all of my terms, actually.
Just a quick comment. I know we can't exchange, but John, I spoke last week at Palomar East and met some folks that want to get involved with SEMRA, so I told them about you guys, and we'll bring everybody together. I'll reach out to you offline.
Okay, all right. Moving on to our next speaker is Flower Alvarez Lopez. Welcome.
Good evening, council. I apologize if my voice is a little out of it today. Flower Alvarez Lopez, for the record, I'm with the Universidad Popular. Just want to come back around the city council meeting and put some things on the record. We were very appreciative for the City of San Marcos Community Development Block Grant Workshops. We supported some of the outreach efforts, and we were very excited for that partnership with the city. Our only feedback is with a little bit more time, we can probably do a better turnout. But other than that, it was great to participate. We had representatives from our organization in all three of the workshops. The next thing is the Universidad Popular Food Pantry. Want to give a heartfelt thank you to Phil and the rest of the city staff that have been collecting items for the pantry that get distributed in the city of San Marcos, essential items. So we're very appreciative for that. The next thing I have on my list is the Comunidad Dia de los Muertos workshops in partnership with Restoration Abbey. So this is our third year hosting it in San Marcos. The Day of the Dead is an indigenous cultural tradition that has survived thousands of years on this continent. We do community workshops to help folks understand what it is and kind of educate people around the Day of the Dead, but also bring community members together to celebrate the loved ones that have passed away in their families. We do a traditional papel picado, which is the paper cutting that is used as decoration. We craft your own sugar skulls. We had about 100 city residents come to the sugar skull-making workshop here in San Marcos. We will be having on October 30th, the building the community altar, where community members actually put hundreds of flowers together for the altar. And then we have on November 1st, our community dinner celebration. Coming up, and we look forward to it, this is also now a tradition, Sesa Chavez Day 2025. So I just want to put it on your calendar, March 31st of 2025. This is, I believe, our fourth year doing it. We partner with the sister colleges, Cal State San Marcos, Palomar College, and Miracosta College to do a community cleanup in the city of San Marcos. And just my ending remarks are going to be around Proposition 36. Also, again, like I did last time, want to put on the record that we stand in strong opposition of Prop 36, which prioritizes profit over people. We believe there are other healthier ways to address some of the issues in our community. We believe in health over punishment, climate justice and green spaces over punishment, and indigenous reparations over punishment. More than happy to follow up with any of the city staff or any of the council members on any of these items that I discussed today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Flower. Perfect. Okay, next up is council, sorry, reports, AB 1234. City, oh gosh, Sandag is the first one. And that was, yeah, that was an interesting meeting. So basically, we talked all about the 125 and, oh, I don't even know how to explain it. Well, the mismanagement that has happened, and we also talked about what's going to happen with our next, well, there was a write-off of about almost $70 million of tolls and late fees and all of that. So I actually wasn't present during that part of the meeting because it started at, well, I left at 2:30, and it was like 2:40. Our meetings are supposed to go from 9 until noon every second and fourth Friday. So I figure if I schedule until 2:30, because I do need to get to other meetings sometimes, that that would be enough time, but apparently it's not anymore. Anyway, at that meeting, we talked about potentially getting rid of the toll on the 125. One of the things that I discussed and I brought up as a board member is it needs to make sure that we are not pushing that and prioritizing that in front of other projects that we have promised to all of San Diego County. Because the transnet funds that, you know, were generated here locally, the local half-cent sales tax was to be used, part of that is to be used for a lot of different things. But we ended up purchasing the 125 as it was a private toll road, and it was in trouble. So we went in and we purchased it, thus pushing it forward to actually be somewhat of a priority over some things. But it has never been added into our regional plan as being prioritized ahead of projects that are already in the pipeline. So North County projects, for instance, the ones that affect all of us here in North County. So I do take an issue of that. I do think that we should get rid of the toll at some point in time, but it's already scheduled to come off, I want to say, is it 2035? By 2035. But that is when I would be supportive of it, being that I don't think it should push up things in front of North County, like, you know, we still have on the 78. And it is moving through the process, but it should not be moved up to be done before we actually get our HOV lanes or our connectors for our HOV lanes on the 78, either at the stoplight at the 5 or at the 7815 connector. So anyway, a lot of discussion on the 125, whether we should push that forward. And then again, there was some closed session in between, and then we talked more about what, you know, what was kind of going on with the current auditor's report, which was not a good favorable one, again, unfortunately. So still fighting the good fight, though we really need to continue, and I will be doing that, fighting against all of this mismanagement and the wasting of funds because it continues to happen over and over. So being an advocate for taxpayers has always been something that's important to me. I know it's important to you. Ed is my alternate. I know you were not available at that meeting, so did you have any comments, though? Yeah, I know, rubbing your head. The almost $70 million is pretty hard to take.
I was at the transportation meeting Friday, and I found out that that particular board meeting did not end until after 5 o'clock. And it was scheduled to end at noon.
Wow. Well, you know, being that we're paid $150 to go to that meeting, and, you know, they're supposed to go three hours, okay. We, you know, many of us are part-timers technically, but that's crazy, 5 o'clock. Yeah, fun for everyone to have to leave at 5 o'clock. Anyway, so we're still, we do have a meeting coming up this Friday, but still a lot of things that'll be coming forward, and hopefully we get our act together because our audits have not been favorable. That is the one good thing that I really am grateful for, the AB 805, is that we do have an independent auditor that does let us know when things aren't happening properly. But I think it's been a long time, mismanagement of funds, and really, we need to hold some serious accountability down at Sandag, and we have not yet done that. So I will be pushing for that. Moving on, League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We did not have a meeting this week in lieu of the annual, yes, it would be the annual conference. Councilmember Nunez, did you attend?
Yeah, if I may.
Yes, please.
I do, I do want to highlight, I was able to attend and represent the city last week at the annual conference. It took place in Long Beach, and another great conference with a lot of substantive material. I was really glad to see that they've added a lot of the AI technology. So I'm thinking that's something that maybe we want to look at.
A blessing and a curse in some things.
That's exactly.
Not when we're using it for workers and losing jobs, but I do like it when it comes to moving our traffic through better.
That's exactly the takeaway that I got, that that's what it's at. But I think something for us to definitely consider, how we will be incorporating, what policies and procedures we want to have in place. So I do want to highlight that. I also do want to mention that we do have a new executive board that was elected. And I want to congratulate our colleague in our neighboring city, Carlsbad, Teresa Costa, council member. She has been elected as second vice president.
Who's the president this year, council member?
This year, well, this year, we elected Mayor Pro Tem Lynn B. Kennedy from El Cerrito.
Before our region?
Before our region.
So this is the executive board. I just want us to think about that we do have local representation at the statewide level. And I'll be serving as the president for the San Diego Division.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So another great conference in the books.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
No?
Unless there's.
No. And North County Transit, we will not have this week because Deputy Mayor had to leave a little bit early today, Jenkins. So North County Dispatch, Joint Powers.
No, no report at this time.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance.
We meet Thursday.
Okay. And any business visits?
Okay, I'll start off.
Home Street Bank.
Yes, we visited Home Street Bank, 277 Rancheros. So if you're not familiar with that is, it is essentially across the corner from My Yard Life. So kind of a little bit behind us on Rancheros. It was founded in 1921 by a group of businessmen that began as a mortgage and loan company and eventually grew into a full-service personal and business bank. It was previously known as Continental Savings, but in 2000, it became Home Street Bank to help preserve its image as a hometown lender. In 2021, they celebrated their 100th anniversary, a milestone reached by only one-half of 1% of companies in the U.S. It has the longest continuous relationship of all federal national mortgage associations, seller services, still in existence. The San Marcos location caters to a business-focused customer base. And now I will hand it off to Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, council member. We were informed that Home Street Bank has a regional presence serving residents in Washington, Oregon, California, and Hawaii. And the San Marcos location has four employees. I was surprised to hear how some of these employees are working from home and there's not a lot of in-person presence.
This is not the kind of bank where you would go into like a Bank of America. They don't, they deal mostly with commercial lending. So a lot of it is remote. And then when they do need to meet, they have a very nice business operation there, conference rooms, meeting rooms. But four employees, does that sound right?
Yeah, that's what we were told, four employees. We were also informed that Home Street Bank's guiding principles prioritize customer needs, nurture employees, and contribute to their community as a responsible corporate citizen. The Home Street Bank team actively donates to food and housing agencies and employees volunteer thousands of hours annually to support community partners. And the leadership's very involved with the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce and the community.
So test me. We spoke with Carol, Dino, and we met with Helen and Anya. And so those were the four employees that were there. And Dino is not necessarily an employee there. He comes in and does work with them. But they run out of skeleton crew, but it seems to be working well for them. And they did say that they're in the process right now of a merger with another similar-type operation. So that would extend their service area along the Southwest to Arizona, New Mexico. And this other entity is based out of Texas. So it will increase their area of operation.
That's correct. Another great visit, another great resource for our businesses.
Okay. Any council commentary? Seeing none. Okay. Next up, the election, and then we'll be back. We'll be back on the second week of the month. All right. With that, this meeting's adjourned.